Thanks, everybody for attending. We have a quorum. We have MJ and it looks like we've got the majority of the department head meetings. Department head, starting with Tal.
Okay, I've actually been quite quiet for me. Working, obviously, on the sale of the old DPW and we will have to do a quick executive session, I think, just to go over that when you guys are ready. And then the other thing is the bill, the mayor asked me to look into whether we could utilize or set up our own testing facility for COVID here in the village. I contacted both the OH and county and spoke with Sean Groden, who is the county administrator, but he's also our contact through the Department of State Department of Health. And he did some research and found that it just is simply too complicated for the village to be able to deliver that kind of a service. We would have to go through the Department of Health, do all the certifications and all the things that the county has already done. He said if we had some ideas to deliver either a service to our residents through a testing that the county could handle, or he said now more timely, perhaps a vaccination center or a day or two or whatever it is that we might set up, he'd be glad to hear that. So if we've got some ideas in that realm, we can, we can maybe put something together and work that direction.
I need to see what the county's requirements are. I suspect it's primarily logistics. To be able to set up a vaccination center, which obviously would be much better. Once they start coming in, you know, I'd like to have as, I'd like to make Athens as central as we can to make it as easy as possible. But I'll need to see what, what the requirements are that the county has and then see if we can't facilitate a vaccination center here in the village. So I'll work on that. I think the, you know, I talked to Josh about it as well earlier in the week. I think the testing, you know, there, there's, there's ways to do testing easily. There's, there's testing you can buy online. But, you know, doing it as a municipality does certain reporting requirements, et cetera. That while not insurmountable, certainly represent a significant challenge. And if we were going to focus on that challenge like that, I think we're better, better suited to do it for the vaccine rather than for a testing capability. So I will continue to work that.
Do you want me to follow?
We stay on their radar for this.
You want me to follow up with Sean or do you want to do that?
Um, I'll do it.
Okay.
I'll do it. I'll talk to him. I talked to him. I had talked to him last week as well on it. So I'll, I'll follow.
That's it for me.
Questions for Tal? All right. Thank you.
I will hang on until about seven o'clock. Then I gotta shoot up to Jewett for a little bit and then I'll come back if we haven't gotten to the executive session yet.
Okay. Anthony?
Hello. I really don't have much either. We have the new pickup truck. It's been lettered. The sanders all wired. Everything's all set, ready to go. The, um, the V plow that came with the new truck. We're thinking about selling it. But it's up to you guys. If we want to keep it, the truck that we're going to get from the firemen, we could put a push plate on it and have a spare truck if we ever need it with another plow for $1,229.
So that would be a fourth.
Yeah, that would be a fourth plow in case we need it. Like Wayne, the big storm that we had, Wayne's pump was leaking. Fortunately, it was just a little rubber O-ring. But if, uh, if the pump went out of that, then we only had the two trucks in that big snowstorm. So this would give us a fourth truck if we needed it. It's up to you guys if you want to, want to keep it or try to sell it.
Discussion?
Did we need to sell it? Cause I remember there was discussion that was, it added a lot to the cost of the truck compared to what we had first put.
Yeah, it was, I think, I think it was another $10,000 to the added cost of the truck. So I think if we sold it, we would get $10,000 out of it, probably not.
Yeah. What can we afford to keep it? Do we need, like, do we need to sell it?
No, I don't think we need to sell it, no.
MJ, what budget did we take it out of? What line item?
Antonio's salary.
That's right.
Yeah.
I think alls we need, we need to do is just amend that resolution if we decide to keep it to just basically pass a resolution that we decided to keep that plow to utilize it on another truck. I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem with holding on to a fantasy thinks that'll work good for him.
I don't see an issue with it either.
Yeah, I think.
Well, I think a good idea.
Yeah.
I'd say keep it. God forbid we ever need it. We got it.
So what was MJ, do you recall what we had stated in the last resolution? Was it part of the resolution that we were going to sell?
I'm not sure if I was at that meeting. Was that that, the last meeting?
Yeah, Dawn was there.
Yeah, so I don't remember. I don't.
I think it was.
We talked about, I'm looking at the minutes, like, we talked about selling it. But it doesn't say anything in the motion that we made. It just says to approve to buy the truck.
Yeah, I think the only thing I just brought up was the fact that the dealer would not separate that plow from the truck and we were looking at additional costs. And I, and the original plan was to sell that plow, but, um, but Anthony came up with this idea, which I think is great because for $1,200, you're getting a whole nother plow truck again, you know, and like he just explained, Wayne was down on his, on that truck on the last storm that had a hydraulic leak. So, you know, it's always good to have another truck and hopefully maybe someday we'll get another guy on board too. So.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we didn't commit to selling that. We just talked about it. So I think it's fine. We don't have to change anything.
That's what I'm looking at. One second. Motion was made, authorize the transfer of money from the Union Street paving to the truck budget for 53,000. No, there's no motion required to, uh, to keep it.
So let's keep it.
Approved in the, uh, in the motion to purchase it. So I think we're good.
So we need to vote on the $1,200?
Ready to do that now? And that needs to come out of the equipment budget, Anthony. Do we?
Yeah, I got, I have $5,000 in small equipment.
Say that again?
I have $5,000 left in small equipment. I was gonna take it out of that.
Discussion? No.
No, I don't.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the expenditure? What'd you say was 1,290, 1,290?
$1,229.40.
Anyone like to make the emotion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries? What else, Anthony?
Just a new building. Um, most of the lighting is, uh, the electrical for the lighting is done. They fired up some of the radiant floor heat. Half the bay is on, uh, break room, the office and the bathroom, the radiant floor heat is up and running in there. He has one small leak in the front half, which he has to fix before he can start that side up.
He doesn't have to take up the, uh?
No, no, it's right, right where the connection is on the wall.
Okay.
So he said it's no big deal. I guess from what I'm, my understanding is the tile guys are coming Monday to do the floors, the tiles in the bathroom and the two, the break room and office. So it's going along rather well, I would say. So.
With, with half the heat, is it warm enough to work and paint?
Oh, absolutely. Yep. Yeah, it's real nice in there. It's, you go up, if you go upstairs where the, where the little room is, you die up there. It's so hot. We, we haven't felt, we haven't felt.
We could turn it down.
We, we went in there. We actually went in there yesterday. We had to take our coats off. It was, it was so warm in there. It's like, holy moly.
All right. Tomorrow, see if I, you're not working tomorrow, are you?
Yeah, we're, we're, we're.
Yeah, I'll drop by tomorrow. See if I can catch you.
The best part of that is it's more heat for less money.
That's right.
You ain't used to the heat, Ant.
Oh, I know. And that's, uh, pretty much all I have.
So what are, uh, either Rob or Anthony, what are, what are they telling us now as far as this all coming together and work being done?
I'm still thinking like the end of January. I mean, they, they still have a little more to do outside and, and when the tile guy gets done, they gotta come in and put the cabinets up, the countertops and toilet, the showers all got to be put in. So.
Okay. Is all of the lighting complete now or is there additional lighting that needs to go in?
The outside lights are on the back of the building and on the side of the building. And I think they still have to do the front of the building yet.
Okay.
He's working his way that way now.
All right. Rob, I'll set something up with you and Jason. I want to, I just want to talk through the, the lighting and the landscaping plan to make sure we've got all that ready to go for the spring. Just to kind of finish everything off.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
And that's all.
And how's that looking then as far as the day they're done? Are you already moved in or will there be additional move in after they're done?
Um, we'll probably have to move in after they're done.
Okay.
Cause right now I don't want to get, I don't want to move anything in there and get in their way. But, uh, we started today. We started cleaning out our building. We threw a whole dump truck load of garbage away today.
Okay. Okay, good. So we're looking probably mid-February or something to be.
Yeah, it might be before that.
Okay.
Uh, Jason's supposed to come down Friday. He's hoping to be here on Friday and I'll, I'll have more information.
Friday. Yes, today's Wednesday. I meant I would come down and see you Friday afternoon is what I meant. That's why I asked if you were working. But I know you're working for five days a week now. So, okay, good. Maybe I'll see if I can't catch Jason when he's there then.
Okay.
Okay, good. Anything else for the DPW? Thank you, Anthony. Wayne, fire?
All right, um, we did get, received a new member in the department. Uh, I don't have his paperwork. I haven't been, uh, been able to drop it off to the office. I have, you know, all that in my report here. I did put in my report so I wouldn't forget about the firehouse cleaner that I've over budget. Um, is it because you haven't received any checks from us towards him yet? Or?
Yeah, usually the, uh, the fire department gives us a check for half of the costs around this time of year.
Okay, that's what I figured. I just put it in there so I would forget. So that's why I put it in there. I will.
Is that the 3410 line item?
The what?
Yeah, 30, 3410 dot one.
Okay.
I'll contact George and, uh, see what's going on and, uh, get you guys a check. And so we can plot up on that.
Okey dokey.
So I believe it's next weekend. There is a class over in Clumey County, ice water, uh, rescue level two, one and two classes that I have seven members wanting to attend. Um, it's, it's about, it's around, it's about, yeah, it is $2,000 to send these members to that class. I have the money in my training line item. So.
Which is your training line item?
3410 dash 14.
Okay, that's basically your whole line item just about.
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, we only use that really towards, uh, when our training officer needs, uh, equipment for training or books and stuff like that.
Okay.
And I already contacted him. He said because of the way this year has been going, he wasn't purchasing anything this year. So I have that full amount. So, so I need, I would like to get approval to, for the 2,000, send them seven over.
Right, okay. Ice water rescue. That sounds awful. Are you going?
Yeah. So I go, I don't have time. I gotta work.
All right. Hey, I really appreciate the, uh, the report here. It makes it really easy to have the conversations about this kind of thing.
Yeah.
Give, give, give a little elbow to the guy to your left there.
Yeah. Um, the new gear actually is coming in a lot earlier than expected. He'll be here the first week of February. And I don't know, I think I mentioned that, that the payment on that loan is actually cheaper than what we, uh, originally.
Yeah, I think you told me in person. I don't, I don't know that we mentioned it to the board.
Right. It was originally going to be like 14,000 and change a year. It's actually dropped to 12,000 and change a year.
Okay.
Because they, uh, instead of going through the fire department, they went through the village and they got a better rate.
Okay. So that obviously is still in your budget. You haven't.
Yes. Yeah, because we usually budget 15,000, uh, for the year every year. So it's actually under what we usually budget.
I mean, it still shows as remaining. We haven't paid that yet.
Right, right. Well, actually this, the, the original, the first payment is actually only going to be $7,500 this year. The next year is going to be the 12,000 and change.
Okay.
Um, so we were awarded, uh, the grant for the security, uh, camera system for the firehouse. Uh, we were only able to get 14,555. Um, the cheapest one, cheapest quote I got was 17,685. So we're a little short, uh, 3130. So.
Can that?
That was from the Athens Gen, uh, community grant?
Yes.
Did, had they asked you, could, could you use a partial award? Did, did you give them an idea of if you only got a partial award, what would you do with it?
Uh, I didn't write the, anything up. I had, um, John Recco write it up for me because he was putting one in for his, uh, jump for the, yeah, for prevention day.
Gail, you don't have any insight there? Did, did we tell them we could live with a partial grant award?
I didn't have anything to do with anything with the fire department.
Okay, I thought you might've been on the board again this year.
No, they, they went just the trustees of, uh, Athens Gen.
Oh, okay. I heard that actually. Yeah. All right. So Amy, you, you didn't.
No, I didn't.
That's odd. Uh, so is it, let's see here. So there's no, there's no partial.
Well, I did originally ask for, I believe it was almost $30,000 because of what I, what we wanted to do was the camera system and the keypad entry lock system. So I think the camera system is more, more important than the keypad system right now. So, I mean, if, if I could, I mean, I got, uh, money in my buildings and grounds. I got all over $8,000. I could use the money out of that to pay for the.
That's what I wrote down. I was going to ask if it can come out of buildings and grounds when, when I got your report. Is that something we can do?
I don't see why not. Um, what are the monitoring costs, Wayne?
I don't know. I don't have the breakdown in front of me.
There's, there's a, a tail to this cost, right? So in, in purchasing the system, are you purchasing a, a monthly fee for monitoring or something like that that goes with it?
No, no, actually, um, we're purchasing it. We own everything.
Okay.
And, uh, everything is put in the firehouse, like the, the hard drive that holds all the, uh, the videos and everything is right here. Doesn't get sent somewhere else.
Oh.
I do believe it's going to be, I, roughly, I think either eight or nine cameras. There's four in the bay and the rest of them are outside around the whole building.
So what do you do if you don't spend that $3,000?
Uh, I honestly don't know. Haven't looked into that.
You get the camera that doesn't face my building.
Oh, you won't feel so bad.
That's wrong. That gallery there?
I said you get the camera that doesn't face my bill.
Hey, I heard you there first.
All right. What other plans did you have for building and grounds? Is that going to impact something else?
No, I have no plans for that.
It seems like it's, it's, that's the category to take it from anyway, you know, because you're protecting the building and the ground. So.
It makes sense to me. Any other comment from the, uh, board?
Nope.
Would anyone like to make the motion to approve? I won't try. I'll do math in public here. It's $3,130 from buildings and grounds to complete the purchase requirements for the, uh, security system.
I will. I will.
Amy made the motion. Did I get a second, Gail?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Who carries?
We have to do for the training.
Um, you know, I don't know. I suppose so. May as well.
No, I mean, you're taking it right from the line item. So.
Yeah, it seems like it would make sense that you could spend training money on training, but.
Okay. And, um, the only thing I got else is, uh, the radio was finally installed in two, three. It took about six months, but we finally got it. And working a whole lot better than no one. County can hear us just perfect. So. And you can see the list of calls that we had. We had, actually had a pretty busy, uh, year last year. We had a total of 111, uh, calls last year. Usually we only average between 80 and 90.
So, yeah, you had a busy month last month.
Yeah, last month was pretty busy. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you for the report. Anything else for, uh, for the chief?
Nope. Thank you.
Gail, do you have anything for the fire department?
Police department?
Police department. Thank you.
Um, just a couple of things. Um, Russo is currently on active duty. That's for 96 days. And, uh, we have $12,608 coming from the school resource officer. That's from, uh, September through December.
Okay. You may see hours from Russo. He's, he's deployed to New Jersey. So you may see hours over the weekends for him. Anything else?
The only other thing is, um, Pat making the resolution about.
Thank you. So we, um, when we did the code enforcement via the police officer, we upped the, uh, hourly rate that we were paying the police. So we need to transfer the code enforcement line item, code enforcement salary line item over to the police salary line item to cover the difference in, uh, hourly rate for the police officers that are doing code enforcement. So I don't have those line items in front of me. But what I'd like, what I'd ask for is a motion to transfer the code enforcement salary line item over to the police salary line item.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Ricky.
I'll second.
Gail, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Who carries? Thank you. MJ, do you know which line items? I, I assume that's all clear without it.
Yeah, I do. I, I just question a little bit how shouldn't you keep the costs or, you know, the budget amounts for the code enforcement separate from the police?
We'd have to separate. It, it's a, it's a $1 per hour per, for each of the code enforcement officers. So, I mean, if we can separate it and do it that way.
I think it, from a budgeting or a bookkeeping standpoint, I think when you look at your expenses for the year, wouldn't you like to see what is cost, what it's costing you to do code enforcement? And what it's costing you to do police work?
I suppose I would. I just, uh, I wasn't sure you could even separate it out that way when.
And then what I, what I was thinking is that, um, you could have a different timesheet so that they, when they're doing code enforcement work, they fill out a different timesheet for that work. And so when we do payroll, they have a different pay rate. And it just seems like it would make it more clear for the future.
But the, they are, they're paid to do code enforcement while they're on as police officers. So it's part of their police officer salary. So you can't segregate code enforcement hours from police officer hours.
But if you're giving them a different rate of pay, it just seems like it would be.
They get that rate of pay all the time for being code enforcement.
But when they're, so when, let's say for instance, one of the officers is working as a police officer, they have a different rate of pay than a code enforcement officer, right?
They are always both police and code enforcement.
Okay, so that rate of pay is the same regardless of whether it's police or code enforcement?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we stick with the transfer of the, the salary lines?
So you're going to get rid of code enforcement line altogether?
I want to leave the line, but keep it zero for now. And I'd recommend keeping it that way in the budget going forward. Good.
We have to go back, um, and adjust, make adjustments to their salaries then from the inception of this to now?
It should be, yeah. Yep, they should have been getting that rate of pay from what was October 1st, right? Okay.
Yes.
Anything else from the police department?
No.
I don't have Ed on, do I? Okay. Any inputs for code enforcement? I'll take it back to them.
No.
All right, Seth?
Good evening, everybody.
Seth, you're muted. We can't hear you.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, everybody, uh, did everybody receive my report?
Yep, got it.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, treatment, uh, as far as process control and, and everything, everything is pretty much normal. Um, I've got something I want to talk about, about the water plant, but I'll get, I'll roll back to that. The village wastewater plant will be out of compliance for the month of December, uh, because of the heavy flows.
You've got November on there. You meant December, right?
All right, right. Uh, sorry, I missed that. Yeah, December.
How many months were we out this year in 2020, right?
Twenty-two or three?
Non-consecutive though.
Non-consecutive. Yeah, yeah. We're, uh, we're not going to trigger any of that, that situation. But we averaged 506,000 a day and that was because of the storms, one at the beginning of the month and, and then, uh, the Christmas Day storm and all the snow melt. There, uh, there was a little water in the parking lot, but it never really impacted the build. So.
Okay, there was no damage or carryover or any impact from that?
No, none at all.
Okay.
Not at all. We did sandbag the doors just in case, but, uh, it never came up high enough to reach them.
We got lucky somehow. The difference between two hours before high tide and high tide didn't seem to change that much.
No, no. Um, but fortunately all the pumps are submersibles. They're, uh, they're meant to be underwater.
Okay.
Um, we were, um, out of compliance as far as 16 days for the month. But everything's pretty much back to normal at this point.
We were, sorry, we were out of compliance for 16 days?
Yeah. 16 days, we exceeded our permit of 400,000 a day. And then the monthly average was 506,000. So we were 106,000 a day average over. Yeah, high day was December 25th at 1,700,000 gallons.
Yeah, when it, uh, when it floods like that, does that water have, does it get right into the system?
Um, it does. That's where, that's why the flows go so high because it's, it's the inflow and infiltration is coming in through the collection system.
Oof, and they don't give us any allowance for that if we needed it?
Nope.
Wow.
Nope.
Nope.
But you are being proactive. I mean, you slipped line some, some of the pipes this year. So if it should ever become an issue, you can demonstrate that you are aware of it and that you are being proactive.
Okay.
All right. Rick Rowe, flows are up $10,000 a day. That's not to be unexpected based on the fact. Clothes are up ten thousand dollars a day. That's not to be unexpected based on the fact that we got so much rain. And we did exceed the seventeen thousand gallon a day permit flow three days. The high day being the twenty-fifth of December at twenty-five thousand gallons. But had no impact on the process.
Okay.
Okay, so we're all good there. At the water. Um, the the phone lines are becoming increasingly unreliable. Um, it is becoming almost a weekly occurrence that we lose our phones. Sometimes we get them back in a couple hours, sometimes it's twenty-four hours.
Is this a state tell issue?
I'm sorry?
This is a state tell issue?
No, this is a Verizon issue. Um, we call in the service guys, they take two or three days to get there. Sometimes we get them back, sometimes we don't. They fix them. For some short period of time, and then they drop out.
Um, why should that be so much different than everybody else on Verizon? I mean, why?
Well, they tell me, I've talked to the service guys, and they tell me it's because of all the copper wire that run from three eighty-five all the way up Skelhari Turnpike. They're never working the lines inside the plant or inside the the gates of the plant. They're always working on the poles outside the plant. Um. And that they tell me it's because the infrastructure is so badly, so badly worn. They literally, sometimes they come and go. I'd like, well, right now we've got one phone line down, one phone line working.
And are they are they cellular or they?
No, they're they're hard lines. The problem is, is that when we lose the phones, we lose the alarms.
Right.
So.
And how do you know you've lost the phones?
Um, I can tell because my my alarm dialer starts to blink, has a little warning light on it, and I know that when that lines out. Case in point, yesterday, I'm sitting at the desk, I look at the alarm dialer. It's blinking, which means I have I have no phone line.
But if they go, well, you're not in the plant, you don't know they're out.
I don't know they're out. Um, so I.
What options do we have?
Okay, um, had the I had a control guy was out at the plant yesterday um, to take care of some other issues. Um, and I talked to him about this, this, this problem, and he said, well, you have two choices. You can put in a cellular dialer system or an internet-based one. We ruled out internet internet-based one because it'd be into five figures to put it in.
Do you not have internet run out there now?
No, we have internet. We have internet there, and that's pretty reliable. Um, it does drop out periodically, but it comes back fairly quickly.
So why would internet voice be five-figure then?
The the equipment and software be about ten grand.
Okay, so it's a different alarming system.
Right, it's a different. So now he I got a quote this afternoon about five o'clock for a cell-based system. Um. We, when we were there yesterday, he uses Verizon, or I use Verizon, he uses AT&T. Outside the building, we we had good signal, two bars, which doesn't sound like a lot, but for this type of system, that's plenty. Um, it would require putting an antenna up on the roof, but that's here and there at this point.
Does the system require four G or will it work off any cellular signal?
I don't know the answer to that that question, but assuming it'll work off any signal. Um. The uh, the to set up the cell-based system is three thousand dollars. That gives us a cellular dial alarm dialer with twelve inputs. In meaning that we could plug twelve different processes into that dialer, and if any one of those processes dropped out, it would call out.
This is Verizon again selling you this?
No, this is this is not a phone company. This is Smith Controls, who are the people that do all our control work. Who you use for a for a for a internet provider, or excuse me, a cellular provider is up to you. Um, it just, I'm assuming it requires a phone number. There is a three hundred dollar a year subscription charge through the alarm dial people to take care of the system. Um, again, I just got it at five o'clock this afternoon, so I haven't had a chance to read it over and see exactly what's involved. Um, so there would be a three hundred dollar a year charge, service charge or subscription charge for that system. Um. It's again, I haven't had it. I haven't had enough time to really look it over and see exactly what's involved. Um, I did check with Dawn earlier today, and she told me that the village does have a cellular plan um, for the village.
That's true.
So I'm assuming that you would just, you know, plug.
We still have to add lines to it, yeah. So why don't you send that out to the board? Look at it, make sure you're comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And that it does what you need it to do. Uh, maybe give me a call next week. Give me a call next week. We'll all talk to MJ, make sure we got a line item and then decide if it's a this year or next year's budget thing.
Right.
I think that's a must-have. We can't afford. We've been we've been burnt by that alarm before. I don't.
Yes, we have. Yes, we have. It's, you know, and I mean, there are times when I go home at the end of the and I've got no alarms. I know it. And they're not a thing I can do. Except, you know, pray that when I come in the next morning, everything's okay, or we get a phone call in the middle of the night.
All right, send out what you've got, and then you and I'll talk to MJ, see if we got a line item for it, and but I think that's I think that's worth doing this year if we've got the money.
Okay, all right, I'll get that out to you. Um, and that's all I got.
That and MJ got money for facility enhancements set aside in the reserve, right?
Yes, um, I think there's some money too for buildings and grounds. I don't have that budget in front of me.
Okay, let's let's take a look at it anyway, Seth. Make sure you're comfortable with it. Make sure it meets all our requirements. And then we'll talk next week.
Absolutely.
All right, anything else for Seth? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Seth.
Thank you.
Oh, right, okay, uh, has everyone reviewed the minutes? Or anyone like to make a motion to approve minutes?
Oh.
Are there any questions or concerns over the minutes first? Sorry.
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve minutes?
I'll offer.
I'll second.
Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Did we review vouchers?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're approving both the vouchers current today and the vouchers that we did not approve in the November meeting. Right? This only says the one here. MJ?
It says December ninth there, too.
Yes, it does. December ninth. This evening and okay, got it. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the vouchers from this evening and December ninth?
I will.
Amy?
I'll second it.
Ricky? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed? So carries. All right, MJ, you want to talk us through this uh disposition of government records?
Yes, there's a schedule that the state uses for governments to throw out records. Um, for instance, like vouchers, like you just approved, we keep those for seven years right now. So the state just changed their schedule of retention and disposition schedule. As of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty, there's a different schedule. I haven't had a chance to look at it. I just printed it off and but basically you you have to adhere by that schedule as local government. So this resolution covers you, and I'll send that to the state, and you'll be all set to go.
And there's nothing in it that we can't do?
Uh, well, it tells you, you know, you have to keep payroll records forever, you know, invoices for, I haven't looked at it yet, so I don't really know. I would imagine they've changed the years a little bit, and that's what you go by to get rid of records, basically.
Do we need to approve it this weekend? I'd like to make sure at least you've looked at it. Send it out.
Um, yeah, you can wait. Uh, there's there's a manual in the at the village office. That's four hundred and fifty pages if anybody wants to look at it.
I just want to make sure you're comfortable that there's nothing in it that we can't do.
No, we can. We can table it for sure.
Okay. Let's come back to that one then. I have, did you 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 sent out the resolution to create a comprehensive plan implementation committee?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not on the schedule, but I wanted to talk about that. Did everyone get a chance to look through that resolution? The resolution, not a local law?
Yes.
Anyone have any questions on that?
Um, wait, hold on. So my question is, um. The the if we pass this resolution tonight, this is this is how this board will be, this commission will be uh implement, like these will be the rules of the commission, or is there a chance for public input?
Well, these would be the rules if we pass it tonight. It's via a resolution. It doesn't require.
Okay, I know I. I never got this, the one that was after we talked about the correction, I don't think.
Uh, so I changed paragraph eight, any appointed or acting commission member shall serve until the end of the term of the commission unless asked to leave. That should be by, unless, that's right, unless asked to leave the commission by village board vote due to lack of attendance or disruptive behavior.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I thought I thought we were gonna have more discussion about this. Yeah, um. Yes, the one about reasons to get rid of somebody.
Okay.
I don't know. I just thought there was going to be more chance for discussion of how this. I thought we would. I thought tonight we were beginning the discussion.
We don't have to pass it tonight. If you want to take more time, we can.
Yeah, I I I might want to. I mean, how does everybody else feel? Does everybody else feel that they can move forward or?
I would agree with Amy. I probably would table it for now until maybe the next meeting or whatever.
I agree.
I just got maybe a little bit more time to review it. I mean, I looked it over quickly, but I'm and I apologize because I said, I, you know, I said I agree except for that one point. But I thought we I thought we were like a jumping off discussion tonight, and we would probably do it the next meeting.
That was my assumption when we started as well. To be honest, I anticipated it being a local law, but since it's a resolution, we have the ability to move faster, but not the necessity to.
Okay, yeah, that's I I thought it was going to end up being a law so that we would start with this, and then we would have public input and all that, so. I apologize for being confused on that, but I wouldn't mind.
Welcome, however, I mean, it can be posted on the website. We we not necessarily have a public hearing on it. But we can post it on the website, leave it out there if people want to take a look at it, and we'll come back to it the next meeting.
We could do one of our discussion things. It's not an official public hearing like we did with the DPW garage, maybe.
Can if we choose to, yes.
Yeah, okay, um, yeah, I just a little bit more, a little bit more time to review more thoroughly. Because I did, I was I thought this was proposed and then to become a law so that we would have.
I did too when I initially sent it out.
Yeah.
Stefan?
Yeah.
Um, I I don't know if people know, I wrote that. Um, and I had intended for it to be a local law. I wrote it as a local law. But then not being a a municipal lawyer, I did put in the word therefore be it resolved, dot, 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 dot. But the board has the power to change it so that it is a local law, and then it would have the public hearing that you're talking about. Or you can do as it's now moving in the direction of being passed as a resolution. Um, and, uh, you know, pass it that way, too. I just.
I think because it's temporary, I think I'd rather do it via a resolution, but we can essentially go through the motions as if it's a local law. Okay, so we'll come back to it as an agenda item next week, next meeting.
Thank you so much. That'd be great.
No worries. Okay, correspondence. So we'll start. We got a couple of Flint mines here. I'll talk a little bit about it. The first one in particular is a little important uh, because we did not get intervenor funds for the Flint mine. So if you recall, we did get intervenor funds for Hecate. Uh, I weighed into it a little late because I didn't weigh into it until both of them were a factor because my concern was over both. So we have intervenor funds for the Hecate. We did not receive them for Flint Mine. Um, I've got a meeting on Friday again uh, with the lawyer and the engineer to determine where we are on our submission and our request for the review of the joint uh, you know, combined runoff impacts on the dam, which is the, again, the only issue that we have uh, with relation to these two, and also to make sure that we can afford to continue to move forward uh, with the intervenor funds that we have. If there's going to be uh, any charges beyond the intervenor funds, I'll stop it. We'll come back and discuss it as a board before we go any further. Okay. Um. Let's see here. Okay, so the next one is uh, back to the Champlain Hudson Power Express. We talked about this a little time, and I actually um, did send a letter uh, on behalf of the lighthouse. They had sent me something um, basically asking if those barges were going to be near the lighthouse. Could we ask them to pull up uh, the broken electrical line? They believe the lighthouse that is believes that the electrical line is broken right adjacent to the lighthouse, you know, as a result of being caught up in moving riprap underneath the lighthouse. They're not positive of that, but that's their uh, sort of working theory. So they wanted to ask if they would, while they were there with barges, if they'd be willing to pull that up, let them get a look at it. Um, so I did send them a letter to that effect because the diagrams that I had seen on their website had them going directly uh, adjacent to the lighthouse. They have subsequently changed those diagrams where it does not come anywhere near it. Well, in as much as it it crosses the river from the east side of the river to the west side of the river uh, at Catskill, essentially at the park down there by the Catskill Creek is where it crosses over. So still not far uh, from the lighthouse, so I did keep my request in with them. I have not heard back yet from them. Next is litigation schedule relative to Flint Mine. I think they extended it a month. Next one's interesting. Um, I had a meeting uh, with the CNC uh, company again that wants to, you know, the I'm sure everyone remembers the construction and debris uh, industrial light industrial that wanted to go in at, what is it, one thirty-three North Washington Street? Um, I had thought it was a dead issue. We I have continued to meet with Parks and Rec and with uh, scenic Hudson over the acquisition of that property as future park space, which I'll talk about here at the end. Um. We went to look at it again in December. Seenic Hudson went to talk to them again in December. Uh, we we had talked to them in October, found out that there the there was still a contract, that the contract was scheduled to expire on December seventeenth. Uh, we went back again, uh, and they so we so it wasn't dead. Seenic Hudson could not uh, put any offers in or do any work on it at that point. Um, they contacted me the beginning of December. That is CAC, the company that wanted to do the project. And they had significantly changed what it was they were asking to do. Uh, I met, it was funny, they they she called me, the lawyer called me and said, can we chat? I said, yes. I said, yes, um, and I wound up on a Zoom call with the CEO, three vice presidents, the lawyer, the engineer, uh, all with these great ideas of how good this was going to be for Athens. Um, they were not going to do any construction material, just clean fill, no asphalt, just clean fill. Um, when they did the math, I told them that uh, the way they did the math, one, didn't change truck routes, two, violated the registration process because if you recall, when we had the meeting, it allowed 500 tons a day of each of the three. Now they were doing 1,200 tons a day of one, which by the rules that, that I had reviewed with them before, now required a permit, not a registration. They said they didn't believe that was true. We're going to go back. At any rate, I let them talk for 10 minutes. I told them, listen, there's no reason to go any further. The, I have a com- comprehensive plan that tells me to change the zoning and it is my intent to move forward and change the zoning to not allow industrial, which ended the conversation. However, they did send me a letter, which is a long-winded way of explaining what this very short letter is. Asking, you know, for the opportunity, uh, and, and kind of reiterating what it is they want to do. Um, but I believe I, you know, I certainly verbally, uh, told them no. Um, and we'll, I'll get with Tal and we'll send them a formal response to this letter again, reiterating that we intend.
Oh no, he froze.
Forward on zoning. Now with that said, I'll talk about it at the forward with the purchase, uh, but there are some buts to that, which I'll discuss at the end. And finally, is the authorization from the county to levy unpaid village taxes? Any questions on any of the correspondence?
Nope.
No.
Okay, so as far as new business, we've talked about the Comp Plan Implementation Commission. We'll come back to that next week. Um, we had, this was several months ago, um, gone to, gone into contract with Delaware Engineering to do some work on uh, kind of looking at our sewer water infrastructure and continue the work that we've been doing with the slip lining to make sure we uh, get a good picture of exactly what's under the streets, what needs to be improved and make sure we've got a plan for how to go forward with those improvements. Uh, Delaware contacted me two weeks ago uh, with what's called a community development block grant, which is $50,000 grant to do exactly that. Um, uh, and do that planning work. Um, so since we were already on contract with them to do the work, we just, uh, I authorized them to go ahead and make the application for that grant. It's a very local grant. It's fairly targeted, uh, as far as, you know, how rural you have to be, how big you have to be. I think we've got a very good chance at that one and it is currently, it's federal based, so it is still funded. Um, so they're going to go ahead and make that application. Any questions on that one?
Um, it says we would need to have a public hearing at the next meeting.
I didn't think that was actually true. Why do we think we need a public hearing? Is that something that they owe to move? Did they send us something that needs to go to public hearing, MJ?
Yes, there was a, um, there was an email that was sent.
I saw the email, I didn't get any attachments with it though. Did you get the attachments?
Yeah, there's attachments and then in the actual email, it states that first of all, you have to make a resolution to go forward and then to have a public hearing. You can have it at the next meeting or you can have it at the meeting, the first meeting in February. If everybody wants to get, you know, a little bit more familiar with the attachments there.
Let's do that then, let's do that. Let's, I did not see the attachments in the email though. I need to make sure I got them. I might have missed them.
Um, so do you want to have the, uh, a public hearing at the next meeting or the February meeting?
Let's plan on a public hearing in the February meeting, so long as that still meets their timeline. So that everyone has a chance to review it. We can talk about it at the next meeting. And then, uh, and then do a public hearing two weeks later rather than trying to rush it.
Okay, did every, did everybody get the attachments though or no?
I, I didn't, I'm looking, I don't think I got anything.
All right, what I'll do tomorrow is I'll forward everything that I received from them yesterday so that you can all look at it.
Good.
And I mean, if, if everybody feels comfortable and wants to move forward quicker, we can do it at the next meeting, but I'd have to know by the end of this week for sure. In order to make sure it gets in the paper.
Send it out to everybody, take a look at it. If, you know, we can't debate it, um, but it shouldn't be asking for funds because it's something they were already contracted to do. Uh, so I'm not, that's what, that's what I'm not sure of is exactly what the resolution that they're looking for is, so. Take a look at it, if it's simple and you're comfortable with it, just let me know you're comfortable with it and I'll let MJ to move, know to move forward. If you have discussion or question on it, let me know you'd like to hold for discussion and we'll discuss at the next meeting and, and delay the public hearing until until the following. But right now, we're delay. If you guys all let me know you're comfortable with it, then I'll let MJ know to move forward with it. Uh, but I haven't seen the attachments myself, so I'm inclined to delay until we know what's in them.
Okay.
And it should, again, it's, they're already funded to do it. Funded grant, we want to take advantage of it. It's well targeted for us and it's exactly what we need to get done and we've already contracted them to do anyway. So we'll take a look at the attachments and make a decision on that. Okay?
Okeydoke.
Thank you.
All right, MJ, what is the contract renewal for EAP? MJ, the rest of the new business here is, uh, contract renewals? You're still muted, MJ.
Whoops, okay, yeah, they're all contract renewals. Common sales is for the, I think it's the generator at the water plant and the sewer plant, I think. I don't know if Seth is still on, but, and North Dome, I haven't seen that contract. It was due December 31st. But I haven't seen it. I know everything's kind of switching around here. Do you have a copy?
Can you chase Joe and Seth down and make sure we've got a current contract? Updated contract to sign? You there Ricky, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm here.
Yeah, just chase down Joe and Seth, make sure we've got a contract.
Yeah, that, uh, I looked at it all a month ago when you were supposed to sign that. I thought it was all done, done with. I, I got one, I looked at it and, uh,
All right, I'll check my box. I would have already signed it, so I'll go through and take a look in my inbox and see.
And I, I thought for sure you signed it by now.
Got, I'll take a look. MJ, this wasn't in the things that I signed, uh, before.
I don't know, to tell you the truth. I, I know it's on my notes and I don't have it crossed off, so it might be done, so.
Okay, I'll go back and take a look.
Maybe I'll, shoot. Maybe can send an email to Seth or Joe and, and see if they have it. I, they haven't been bugging me about it, so it might be. I just know I don't have it crossed off.
Okay, what is the EAP services mid Hudson Valley?
That is the random drug testing for the DPW.
Where, uh, is that one in my inbox for signature?
That just came in, so I have it now, I'll give it to you.
And the common sales and service?
Just came in too. Yeah, that just came in too. That is for, uh, service plan maintenance agreement. I think it's the generators at the water plant and the sewer plant. I'm not sure, maybe, uh, maybe Anthony or Wayne knows, I'm not really sure. If they're still here, I don't know.
I think they are.
Yeah, we're here. Yeah, it is for the two generators.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, once again, what we'll do is we'll go around the room. We, we will have to have executive tonight. Um, hopefully a very brief one. Uh, so before we go into executive, we'll essentially go around the board members, get any closing comments so that, uh, you know, again, as we come out of executive, we will immediately adjourn the meeting and not hold any more, any more meeting that should be public. All right, so let's start with Amy. You're muted, Amy.
I was unmuted the whole time and then I was like, I'm not saying anything, I should mute myself. Anyway, I have a couple of things I wanted to bring up. Um, we talked briefly, I think like back in November about possibly putting some signs at the entrances to the park that delineates some of the rules like no alcohol, pick up after your dog, yada, yada. Maybe a little bit about there's a dog park, take your dog over there. Um, so I did put in a call to a local, um, sorry.
That's his dog.
Yeah, he just got out of his little crate. I did put in a call to the sign company that, um, MJ and Anthony had suggested, I haven't heard back yet, but I did a little digging online and those are about $35 to $40 for like a 12 by 18, nothing too big or, you know. Uh, I just figured it was something we could look into, I haven't gotten that far. The other thing is that people have been complaining a lot. I've, I've been on Facebook and people are complaining that people aren't picking up the poop. I'm here tonight to talk to you about poop. Um, so I looked into getting some of those little poop bag stations that they have in, in parks and, um, the basic like pole mount, doggy pot that you see everywhere, the little green thingy is nine, they're 99 bucks each. Um, and, uh, you know, the bags are for like 4,000, it's like $130. But I thought maybe we could talk about getting a couple of those down in the park because it might not fully solve the problem, but you know, it might help a little bit and at least it shows that we are serious about that.
How much were they again, Amy? I'm sorry, I missed the tail end of it. How much were they?
The doggy, the actual thing is 99 bucks. Um, it does not come with the pole though, so we have to figure out how to mount it. I didn't, you know.
Good mount, there's probably some places down there to mount. There's a, uh, there's the pole that holds the water.
Yeah.
Line, there's the, um, ticket building.
Mm-hmm.
We can probably find some places to mount, but I'd have to take a look.
Yeah.
And how many are the bags? They're not, they're.
Yeah, the bags are like, you get like 4,000 of them for $130. I just thought that we could start the conversation of, uh, where we might place them or if people are, are into that as an idea. I think it's, I think it would be good. I mean, there's a few different kinds of non-poop picker-uppers, um, but sometimes people just don't have a bag. And so, you know, that might, that might be a help, but there is a lot down there.
Yeah, and I, I might add, you know, if we can do it, you know, I'm thinking as I, uh, you know, one at on or, or near the ticket booth on that side of the park as you come in, one on maybe a telephone pole, uh, close to the um, bandstand on the other side of the park and each with a sign underneath it that, you know, makes it obvious and says, pick up after your dog, please.
Yeah, they have, um, I can, I'll send everyone a, a more information about it, um, and then we can figure out how they mount. Um, but I just wanted to see if, if that's something that I should put together. If anybody had any strong feelings for or against poop bags.
For the record, pro poop bag.
Um, you know, it's just something people have been complaining about and I agree with them, you know, it's just, it's, and it's, it's always worse in the winter for some reason, but, um, I thought it, it could be a help and it's not too expensive a thing to do.
Um, yeah.
And then the other thing that I wanted to ask is, it just popped in there today. Um, did they ever put that street light in on North Franklin Street?
Yes.
They did, okay. I haven't been over there in a while. Um, feel like I never leave my house, but, um, and then the other thing I wanted to bring up was, again, I'm sorry, I've been on Facebook. Um, there's a new development that's advertising.
I'll talk about that, that's in my notes.
Okay, cool. Um, and then that's all I had for right now. I can, I'll get pictures and whatnot of the poop bag stations and I'll get some more research on the signs and I'll, I'll send them around so everybody can at least see what it looks like and see if we want to move forward. Maybe we'll decide at the next meeting.
Good.
Um, that's that. And, um, we did have a question in the chat. Uh, I was going to have Gail answer it about the, um, charging stations for the, for electric cars.
That was part of what I was going to say.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, well, is that it, Amy?
That's it for me.
All right, Gail, you're up.
Okay, I just, uh, we did get full funding for the, um, electric charging stations. Josh and I have to find a time to get together to review everything and see what the next steps are to, um, get it installed and set up.
Okay, great. We're going in the municipal lot on North Franklin, yes?
Right.
Okay. Very good. What else?
Um, the cultural center, uh, requested some help with some of the construction there. I guess, uh, we'll wait till after the DPW is in the building.
Yeah, I spoke to Carol about it. I need to follow up with her. I spoke to Carol and I spoke to Anthony subsequent to that. Uh, what I will tell Carol is we're probably looking at the March timeframe. And I, Carol was fine with that. Uh, it didn't need to be a January thing. Um, so I, Anthony and I talked about it and I'll, I will get back with her.
Okay, and then we had, um, some questions about having signs, uh, made up uh, to put in the windows of businesses. I got them today. Um, I'll be passing them out this weekend, uh, probably Sunday, that's my next day off.
Okay.
Let me know if you want help.
Okay.
Amy, you're going out of your house?
I, I will make an exception for Gail.
Question?
I think she's.
She's volunteering to help.
No, I said, I'm, I'm saying I'll help.
Thank you Nancy. Ricky, what do you got? Oh, sorry, Gail, are y'all done?
Yeah, I was just saying I would get in touch with both of them.
Perfect. Ricky, you're up.
I got, uh, right after that bad storm we had, our guy did a good job, the roads were clean. And right after they got them clean and scraped out, come the snow blowers. Now, I went on nightjacket, there is a law on our books saying you can't snow blow the snow back out in the road. I'm not saying arrest them the first time, but the first time they get caught, it warn them. Second time you have to give them a ticket because I'm telling you, it's terrible. You go from a dry road to snow in the road, four or five inches deep and you hit it, you go all over, it's terrible. And it makes our guy, then I got to hear what a shitty job the village crew was doing to the roads and I know where it came from. So we got it, you gotta, you gotta do something about the snow blow, just blowing snow out the road.
Let's, uh, let's ask Tal if he's aware of any.
Well, it's state law too.
Close to executive. Let's ask Tal if he's aware of um, any other local laws like that at other villages.
That's a, that's a state law too. That's a vehicle and traffic law. Threatening a vehicle and traffic law too.
I put it in the newsletter to tell people not to do it. I don't know, that, that reached 200 people.
There's a lot on to do it.
Yeah.
You can, they can get a regular traffic ticket for that.
Just like in the first one.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it's usually, usually a warning fixes it.
Yeah.
Then a second time, give me a ticket.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a policing issue during heavy storms, I guess.
And, uh,
So Ricky, you're not proposing.
I would.
Local law, you just want to see the state law enforced, is that what I'm hearing?
Pretty much, just having stopped on it up in the road, put it on the snowbank and the village crew takes it out when they snow blow it.
Yeah.
And there's one other thing I got. I went down there today, the new building. I went down, wonderful, the heat on it was great. But I come outside and on the backside, these lights up on it, the building. They gotta get be bigger lights and that's only two, three inch by three inch. I got more light out of a flashlight.
Okay.
I gotta look at them, I haven't seen them yet, the lights.
We'll take a look at the way.
Either two inches or three inches by three inches. They're very small then. You probably get more light out of a flashlight.
All right, we'll, we'll, I'm going to go up there. All right, we'll, we'll, I'm gonna go up there on Friday. Maybe, Rob, you and I can talk about it and see.
If I, if I remember correctly. If I remember correctly, tho, those lights. Where they were supposed to cast straight down the building, so they weren't so, uh, like.
Yeah, they are supposed to be directional, but they need to be adequate, I guess.
Yeah, I, I can look, yeah, we'll meet up and we can look at them.
Good.
Okay, that's all I got.
All right, thank you. Rob?
A couple of things. Um, the auctions did very well. Um, it generated, uh, eleven thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty cents total. In sales. Uh, we got paid for everything so far except for the portable radios. Um, I just received and, uh, every time somebody pays, I get a copy of the paid invoice emailed to me. Um, so the guy paid for the pickup truck last night. Um, and I'm just waiting to hear from him when he wants to pick it up. But everything else, uh, is pretty much gone. Uh, the dump truck went last week, late last week. Um, but like I said, the only thing, the portable radios weren't paid for yet. Um, I think it exceeded the deadline when the highest bidder was supposed to pay. Um, so with the board's feelings on it. Um, I can, if Auctions International is representing us for the most part on these auctions. Um, so they negotiate for us with these bidders, uh. But, um, with the board, if the board's okay with it, I can call Auctions International up. And tell them they'll offer it to the next highest bidder if this bidder defaults on it.
Is that not Auction International policy that they can do that? That, that, that's how the auctions work?
Yeah, yeah, they can offer.
I don't think you need a resolution or anything to do that. If that's how it's written when people bid, then go ahead and do it.
Yeah, they, they sold for six hundred and ten dollars. Um, so the next highest bidder bid up to six hundred, so. Um, so you're only talking ten dollars.
Yeah, yeah, no, if that's on the policy and people know that.
Yes.
Uh, that there's a deadline, and if they don't meet the deadline, it goes to the next highest bidder, then you don't need board approval. Go ahead and do it.
Well, the second thing, uh, oh, oh, just, we're still waiting for the titles for the police car and the fire truck, the rescue truck. As soon as I get them, I can put them on also for sale.
We have a, a path to get them at this point?
I don't, I, last I knew, they were up in Albany, the paperwork would made its way from, I guess, Catskill up to Albany to get the titles. So as soon as I get the titles, I can. Contact Auctions International. They already did all the photos on the vehicles. Um, they can just, I can just call Mark Smith up with Auctions International and, uh. And email the copies of the titles to him, so he can list them.
We got a line on the titles at least. We know they exist, and we know roughly where they are.
Uh, last I knew they were up in Albany. The paperwork, we, we've already filed the paperwork for the duplicate titles. Um, so that, from what I was told, the paperwork went from Catskill up to Albany now, so.
Okay.
Uh, so we do, we are on it. Um. The second thing is, uh, the lawnmower contract, you know, we're in the middle of January now. Um, spring's not too far away. Uh, we probably should consider, I don't know, maybe the next meeting, the follow meeting. Uh, get, look into, know, putting that out for bid again, the contract.
That's a very good idea. Thank you, Rob. We always, we do it in the nick of time, and then we wind up with a problem with it, so.
Um, I would recommend probably extending that to April, starting that off in April. And, uh. So maybe run to October on that or whatever.
MJ, can you dust off our, uh. Or RFQ for that, and we'll look at it at the next meeting?
Yes.
Get ahead of it. Thank you, Rob. That's a good idea. We've gotten bit by that two years in a row now.
And just the last thing, uh, I already talked to you, Stefan, about it last week, the back, just so the other board members are aware. Uh, the bat, the injection pump went out on the backhoe. Uh, backhoe is an essential piece of equipment because if we get a water break right now, we can't use it to dig up. Excavate for the water break, uh, but the town, however, uh, is offering, uh, let us, uh. If they can bring their little, uh, excavator into the village here to dig the hole for us, um, in the meantime, but. Um, Milton Caterpillar, um, will come down and replace the injection pump on the backhoe. It is a hundred and fifty-seven dollars an hour for labor. Um, but going that route to have them fix it here. At the building is a lot cheaper than loading machine up on a low boy and hauling it up to the dealer. And you're still probably gonna end up paying a hundred and fifty-seven dollars an hour labor up, once you haul it up there anyway, so. Uh, so it is cheaper for them to come down with the part. Um, and then replace it here in the garage, so, um. So just to let the other board members know if you see a bill come across. Or, uh, we don't know exactly what the total is. Injection pump on a diesel is very expensive part. Um, but, uh, it's gotta be fixed, so it's, it's down right now, so.
Hey, Rob?
Yes.
It's all, it's all back together.
Oh, it is, though? All right, good.
I got to, I got to tell you that yesterday. Yeah, it's all back, everything is all back up.
Well, that was quick.
It was, uh, I think the pump was three hundred and sixty-two dollars and then whatever the labor cost is.
All right, so we're back in business. We can, we can dig our own holes again.
Yes, we can dig our own holes again.
Um, so, uh, but just so let the other board members know, you'll probably be seeing that bill come across from Milton Caterpillar, so. Um, and that's, uh, that's all I have.
Good. All right, so I talked already about, a little bit about one thirty-three North Washington and the C and D project, and then I mentioned that. Um, Parks and Rec and Cine Hudson were still looking into, uh, the purchase of that property. Cine Hudson actually did negotiate a purchase price. With a six-month option to decide is basically what they have, so they've, they've got an agreed purchase price. They've got six months to decide to execute. We met. With Parks and Rec, and it was the same cast that we'd had with Parks and Rec this last several meetings, but they brought in a regional director. Who was much cooler to the idea, uh, than I had gotten with Parks and Rec in the past. And the concern is. Um, that a significant portion of the value of the property is tied up in. The eight thousand square foot steel building on the property. So, uh, it's, this, it's not a no, but what they're looking for is, how would we use that? How do we, how do we find a partner? To utilize that building, uh, and what options do we have there? So. Um, I, I, I'm kind of throwing it out to the board for ideas. I'd like to see something, you know, kind of an educational use or something like that. Obviously, it's got to be in line with. Uh, the guidance that comes out of the comp plan, right? So, uh. You know, I, I'm thinking I'll call, um. Columbia Green, uh, Hudson Community College, places like that, see if there's any options. Uh, maybe a, an organization like Riverkeeper, uh, might be interested, uh, so I'll call around to those, but any other ideas that we have. Uh, you know, if the board members or anybody else has a good idea on that, please let me know, uh, and I'll reach out. Um, I've got until February first. I'm supposed to come back with some ideas. I don't necessarily need agreements. I just need ideas by February.
Stefan?
Yeah.
One idea is, um, maybe in addition to education is the arts. And, uh, maybe approach the lumberyard, see if they're interested in a partnership since their. Identity is around kind of a formerly industrial building. Maybe they, they might have some interest in, in that.
I will. Thank you. All right, I talked about the Hudson Champlain power line. Okay, uh, so Amy brought up these Riverview housing. Um. The, the bottom line is essentially nothing has changed. Um, the developer who was there, who had been advertising. Uh, you know, uh, out in front of, this is the Brick Row, the ninety-three acres, uh, between Brick Row and, um, three eighty-five. The developer who had been advertising that he was gonna build houses there sold, uh, a portion of it, and now that. Uh, that developer is advertising that they're gonna put buildings there, and so that's, that's why we're suddenly seeing this Riverview. Uh, housing complex as opposed to the, the old signs that were up. They have not gone to the planning board yet. They have not come up with any agreement yet on water and sewer. We know that they can support only a few houses down there. Uh, but even that's not a guarantee that they get to build a few houses down there because there's somebody interested in the seventeen acres down there. Uh, and there are other people interested in building houses down there, so they need to come up with a plan for us, uh, that, at. On their dime, they've got to come up with a plan for water and sewer. They've got to get through the planning board. Um. So at this point, Riverview Housing is a dream. Uh, however, it's a dream built on, um. Ninety-three acres of medium den, medium density residential zone property. So they, they, I do expect that they will build something, uh, but they will build something that meets, uh, the planning board rules and regulations and, uh, and the guidance, and they will build something. That has proper sewer water and, uh, whatever expenses are required to run that sewer and water. So all of that is still up for grabs. When I talked to the original, um, developer, now that's changed because he has sold, but we talked about, um. Him making improvements to, uh, Brick Row Road to the sidewalks again, uh, alongside Brick Row, et cetera. Uh, he was amenable, but again, I, I need to get the, the new developer, uh, on a call here and start the conversation. So that's where we are with it. It's simply more advertising for something that has, uh, taken no steps to implement yet. And I did, I, I sent Amy something to publish on Facebook. I, I never post on Facebook, and I, I haven't done it yet, Amy.
I thought you were gonna do it. You wanted me to do it?
What's that?
I thought you were gonna do it.
I was gonna do it. I just haven't done it.
And then I thought you were gonna do it, and I was like, should I do it?
An hour to figure out how to post something on Facebook. I just haven't set aside the time yet.
I'll do it. I'll do it.
Um, all right, so we'll talk about that. I think we covered status in the new DPW building.
Yes.
You know, the heat, we covered all that. And we covered the CD, CDBG grant, uh, from Delaware Engineering. So that was everything I've got. So with that, um, so again, uh, for everybody who's on, next steps, we're gonna go into a brief executive session. We will not conduct any business on the backside of that executive session. We will adjourn from executive, and then we will adjourn the meeting so as to not conduct any business. Because I know it's, we'd never be able to time it to get people back onto Zoom, et cetera, so. Uh, that will conclude the business that we'll conduct as part of the standard meeting. I'll ask Don and Tal to stay on. Uh, MJ, you are welcome to stay on. Everyone else other than the board members, I'm gonna have to ask you to, to please drop off.
Happy New Year. Thank you.
Happy New Year, everybody. Thank you. All right, we got just the right players. Okay, so in the end, much ado about nothing.